It is 9:00 AM. I am Chairman Luke Ommitt and Commissioners Steve Bradshaw and Asia Williams are present. And today we are here for our regularly scheduled business meeting. The purpose of the regular business meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. Regular business meetings do not constitute public hearings wherein the public has the right to be heard on every agendized item. However, at the discretion of the Chair, everyone may be afforded an opportunity to speak on a particular issue if recognized by the Chair. Any unrecognized comments or disruptive behavior will be grounds for removal from the Board meetings by the Chair and may subject the person being removed to criminal prosecution according to the law. Please direct any public comments to the Chair. And with that, Pastor Chris, please write us.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for our beautiful county. We thank you for all of the great things that this place holds. Lord, I'm asking that, I'm reminded of your words, Jesus, when you said, "A house divided cannot stand." So we ask God that every spirit of accusation leave in Jesus' name. We ask God that there would be a peace that rests on our county. I thank you that your word says that love must be without hypocrisy to abhor what is evil and to cling to what is good, that we are to be devoted to one another with mutual love, showing eagerness in honoring one another. So God, I pray that there would be a dynamic shift in our hearts and in our minds in this county as we come to the table with differences, that we would seek the peace of Bonner County, even as many of us are seeking the peace of Jerusalem today. We thank you, Lord, for what you are doing. We thank you that you are our guide and you are the one who sets all good things in motion. So we ask God for your peace and your blessing on these commissioners and on this county in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Good words.
Pastor, would you be willing to say that announcement about what your congregation is doing for Freedom House while you're at the mic, please?
Sure, yeah. Freedom House is a safe and sober housing for men and women throughout the county who are either in drug court or trying to find a place to live where they're not in addictive environments like home. And so we've housed, right now, we've got 12 individuals, men and women, in these houses getting safe and sober housing. We are doing a cornhole tournament on November 4th from 12 to 4:00. And we hope people can come and make a team and come play and raise some money for Freedom House to keep those doors open. And you can find all the information at H E W C dot com. So, there you go.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So for public comment today, for those citizens or residents or guests that are interested, please approach the microphone, microphone, excuse me, and state your name for the record so that people out there in the Internet land are aware of who you are. And first off, we have Ms. Amy Lunsford.
Amy Lunsford for the record. Thank you. So last weekend, or last week, Mr. Bradshaw wasn't here, so I don't know. Ryan asked about the IT and why a county official would tell the fairgrounds there's only one IT and that it was the sheriff's IT. And with a records request, this is where I think, I don't know which county official instructed them, but here's the record request of an email from Sheriff Wheeler to Commissioner Ommitt that says neither Sergeant Marcus Robbins nor any of his team members will be meeting you or county IT personnel at our locked, secure area today, which is located in the basement of the courthouse. Permanent access to this location will never be granted to you or to county IT staff. My IT personnel were in communication with the county IT staff last week, and my staff provided them with pictures of the Intermac service equipment located in the basement and started the discussion on relocating the server. That equipment can and will be moved upstairs in another secure area, which will take our staff less than 30 minutes to do. I will be looking forward to hearing from Jacob Storms when he is already to facilitate that move after this is completed. There will be no reason for all, at all, for county IT staff to need access to this area again. In the future, please direct any and all questions and concerns about sheriff office IT directly to me, not to Sergeant Marcus Robbins. Thank you, Sheriff Daryl Wheeler. So, there is no doubt in my mind that somebody did not instruct the fairgrounds that that's what they had to use. And again, all summer long, I heard Mr. Wheeler accuse the board of their obsession with the fairgrounds. My question is, what is his obsession with the fairgrounds? Why does he want control of their IT? And this clearly states, he feels he has his own IT. And why does he have his own IT? And does anybody allow access to this IT or is this his one secret server?
So there's an opportunity to clarify a few things. So sheriff has a different type of system that requires a certain type of clearance. And that could be why he uses the term "my IT" versus another. It has to do with the clearance on it. And you're referencing an area that housed data that only the sheriff has access to. It's not in his building or this, it was in the courthouse. So I think there might be some misunderstanding happening with the email that you're addressing. And so when people talk about it, they're just using a term, calling something admin building IT or sheriff's IT. We have a technology department, and not everybody has access to what the sheriff has. He's an elected official, and the type of data that he maintains is different. And that could be where that's coming from. And so with respect to the fair board, when the original memorandum of understanding was drafted, there was a request in that memo of understanding that the fair board was going to use sheriff IT. And if you go back to that particular tape, you hear me say, "That should be removed. It's just IT technology, not a specific one." And so that was at the beginning of the year where that clarification was made. And the redraft of the MOU removed the term sheriff's IT. And the reason I said it should be removed was because there's no such thing as one IT versus another. It's technology, and there are people that are dedicated on one side or another, but it's still technology. I think it's the communication that makes it sound confusion. And so they weren't told to use one or another. They actually, as the MOU came in, they wanted to use one or the other. And my comment on that was, we can't guarantee anybody anything. We have a technology department. And that MOU was amended. So hopefully that answers your, the email question. But that one is actually on tape about the IT for a fair board.
So all of their information goes to the general county server? It's just managed by Marcus Robbins?
No, it is different because of the type of data the sheriff has. It is not the same.
I'm talking about the fair board. Is their information going to the sheriff's locked IT closet?
No.
Or is it managed by Marcus Robbins?
What they were asking for was who was going to be their liaison when they had their own issue with their own, like, desktop systems. It wasn't using anything related to the locked. The locked has to do with sheriff business. And that was just, it makes sense to say that's what they would use because their offices are close together. So he's not storing data for the fair board in a locked area. That's for sheriff work.
Okay, and then this locked storage, who is accountable to that?
The sheriff.
If you make a complaint about you think the sheriff is hiding something in his locked server that nobody else in the county is allowed to access, who do you call to audit that server?
So that would be for you to ask the sheriff that question because that's not the boards. And so he is an elected official on his own right. And so if you have a concern that goes about, goes toward the elected official, just like with commissioners, I think you're needing to reach out to the Attorney General.
Okay.
Because I can't go in that, I can't go in that locked room either. I don't have the clearance to look at that data.
Okay. And then after yesterday's press release, again, it's the fair board's press release, again, it just makes it seem like the sheriff is obsessed with the fairgrounds. And I really would like to know how it's all coming together and why there is this obsession?
I think that's a valid question. I think a lot of people in the community have that question. I also think that there's a part that this board actually had to play in what's happening. So when this board took the seat, there was communication from a prosecuting attorney, Wilson, to the fair board. They were trying to develop that. Then this board, had a member of the board have an issue with Bill Wilson working with the fair board. And so then they swapped it out for Mr. Bauer. And then there was an issue with Mr. Bauer. And so now they actually have a third-party attorney, which, when you have a third-party, that's a completely different type of communication. And so I'm aware that there were two press releases, one from Clerk Rosedale, and then there was one from the fair board. But there is litigation. I believe that Clerk Rosedale's suit was dropped because of a technicality yesterday, having to deal with a mailing address. But there is a, there is an issue that we need to actually look at as a county to give the answers to the people. I know that people would like to know more, and I know I sent you an email regarding your request of where the AG was with reviewing that report. And there is not an answer at this time, but the prosecutor is aware that people want to know that answer. I think it's reasonable for our county to sit down and have a plan because one of the things that's missing is something happened. We know it happened. And so what are we doing to protect not just the staff, but also the people and their donations to the fair? What are we doing to make sure something like that doesn't happen and not siloing our information? But that needs us to have some information returned to us.
And that press release would have been all in fine until you find the first, like, well into it where it says sheriff inter-office memo or whatever. And again, they bring it to the citizens of, why is the sheriff making memos on the fairs we have? It's none of his business. They should have gotten their third-party attorney to address all that information with them. So again, it just, you know, just like his press release with Darcy, this press release, why is his name all over everything?
Ms. Lunsford?
My three minutes is up.
Yes, however, in fairness to your three minutes, technology, I know you're downstairs two floors beneath us. It'd be nice if the timer would work for future people. But the Idaho bar has weighed in. And in regards to the variation of press releases, it is interesting to watch the gyrations of certain people to where the Board of County Commissioners has authority, they have no authority, and all of a sudden we have authority again. However, speaking only for myself, the appropriate way to handle that is not in the public sphere, but it is to handle it in a manner that actually serves the county and the taxpayer. And that will be forthcoming.
And in your executive meeting today, will you guys have a statement afterwards? Because I seen that the fair board is something for your executive meeting. So if people were to stay after, will you be coming back in to give us an update on your take on this or what your fair board discussion was?
I will give you a brief preview in that.
Okay.
The attorneys for the Board of County Commissioners and the county, the elected county officials are going to meet with the hired third-party attorneys that the fair board has engaged. All we are doing today is to discuss preparations for that meeting. So there will be, you now know that we are getting ready to have a meeting between the elected representatives of Bonner County and lawyers hired by an appointed board from this body right here. So I don't, I do not foresee a statement coming out other than we are going to schedule a meeting until after that meeting is done. Yes.
But to clarify, a statement being made that says the bar has weighed in, there was no wrongdoing on the part of the county's paid lawyers working with the fair board. There wasn't, there wasn't a finding. So to say that could potentially be misconstrued.
It could be.
And so the bar didn't say that the fair, that we couldn't use our deputy prosecutor's office for that. It was this board that pushed us in that direction.
Actually, Commissioner Williams, that is exactly what the bar said repeatedly and multiple. Thank you, Ms. Lunsford.
I think at this time, because of the current dynamics around all that, it would be inappropriate for the commissioner to go any further into detail on those subjects.
Agreed. Thank you. Ms. Anderson, Ms. Christina Anderson.
Okay, I'm just gonna kind of go back to that fair board meeting that I went to last week. And the IT issue, because that seems to be a high issue right now. It was stated, actually, that Commissioner Williams, that you advised, and the word was "advised," the fair board to transfer their IT to, quote, "the law side of the county." So I'm wondering if you could comment on this specifically. One, why you would be advising the fair board? And secondly, why you would want them to have the sheriff controlling their IT?
I didn't advise him. If you listen to the tape for the MOU discussion, I actually requested that sheriff IT be removed from the MOU because we couldn't guarantee that. So someone making a statement, I really can't defend against, but there is a record of what my recommendation was with the MOU.
The tape that you're referring to, what tape or what date is that?
I don't recall the date. You'd have to look at the agendas when we were discussing the memorandum of understanding. The memorandum of understanding was drafted saying that the fair board would use sheriff's IT, and I requested that that be removed because I didn't find that to be in appropriate language. So, but the proximity of the individuals is closer using the personnel that is under the sheriff, and it makes sense, but I didn't agree with an MOU saying that the county would guarantee that for them.
So, MOU is not part of the BOCC meeting or the fair board meeting?
BOCC. I haven't, I haven't given any recommendations at a fair board meeting.
Pardon me, ladies. And tech, if I can get this to stop. I'm gonna read from 1-200. "The purpose for the public comment segment of the Board of County Commissioners' business meeting is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible board action. The board will not engage with dialogue with the presenter during this session." So I apologize for engaging, but we have a lot of people here. We have an agenda, and we have multiple executive sessions with a number of employees. So I am going to resort or revert to the order of the agenda. We are not going to be engaging in dialogues from the board today. If you have questions, please present your public comment to the board. The individual commissioner can make that decision whether or not they will respond, but it's not going to happen during the business meeting because we also have a significant number of county employees that are here to serve.
I think there's a discrepancy, and I think this has been pointed out to this board a few times. It does, there is a conflict because there is a line that says that members of the public can direct something to a commissioner. And I think that's where the board has to take a consistent position on, that you can direct a question at a commissioner. And I think that the interpretation from the public is that we'll answer them when they ask the question. And I think maybe if we just set the tone of, are we never going to do that? And public shouldn't be asking questions in this venue with an expectation of an answer? Because I know there are people that keep reminding us of another section of that rule.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. And it is also that the, all questions are directed to the Chair. And for the purposes of this business meeting and for what we are doing today in accord with 1-200, you can certainly write down your notes, but for the purpose of this meeting and for future meetings, questions will be directed through the Chair, of which I am currently the Chair, and we will move forward in the business of Bonner County. Thank you. Please proceed with the time, Ms. Anderson.
So, Chairman Ommitt, I guess my last question would be, I heard Ms. Williams say that the proximity is closer to the sheriff's department to the fairgrounds for them to maintain IT. I also heard earlier today, it was said that the courthouse is where that server is held. So I would need clarification on where that location of that server is, because if it's a courthouse, the proximity, our plan is out the window. And then the other one is, what kind of information would the fair have that's so sensitive it would require sheriff's level of protection? The only thing that comes to mind for me is the misuse of funds and the allegation that Darcy Smith was harassed by the sheriff's department. The only thing I could think of that was so important, they need that level of protection. So I would ask, at the BOCC, do you give diligence and find out why the sheriff needs to have that level of protection in their board records? Because most of those are open to the public. I'm not sure why or why. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there?
Morning. Susan Goldman for the record. I know you won't, maybe, maybe you'll answer this, maybe you won't, but I would like to have it on the agenda if you can't answer it today. I am unclear as to how this became the chairman. Was there a vote? Did I miss a meeting? Because I thought that Mr. Bradshaw was the chairman and now Mr. Ollman is the chairman. Maybe you could just enlighten us. Thanks.
We did a public meeting yesterday.
Okay.
In the workshop.
Oh, the workshop?
Yeah.
So not a business meeting? Not a business meeting?
No, it doesn't even have to be a public meeting. It's an administrative thing. But we did it in the public record.
Mr. Moore?
Kim, for the record, dedicate to Israel a lot and anybody else that, I appreciate the pastor this morning when he was talking about Israel. And so hopefully all of us Christians remind ourselves of whatever's going on in the world, not just with Israel, but with Russia, Ukraine. And so hopefully we keep all these things in mind in the end times and follow the world. As I mentioned last week, John Pomeroy, who was a pastor here in Dallas, he has a process of trying to put up a structure for the homeless. So we'll keep, hopefully the community can keep that in mind as for donations and help our homeless. But earlier today, we had our planning and zoning here. There was a dialogue, whatever, about pack river buyout that happened. That was from this morning. How the Verbetta Bridge became a debacle or whatever too. And so last week, they brought this up to you, and you said you were gonna go and look into it and maybe give a response to that from the county knows where we stand on that or whatever. Because a citizen, whatever, through the pack river buyout, through the Verbetta Bridge, through the firing of the two staff people, whatever, with planning and zoning, I mean, these things have steadily cost us citizens numerous amounts of dollars that evidently get to stay hidden. They don't have to be made public. That just leaves conspiracies as for amounts or whatever out there. So steadily trying to keep in mind or whatever as for, you brought up MOUs, MOAs, memorandums of agreements. And so the county, we have criteria with planning and zoning and road and bridge and all these people, whatever, as for requirements, county, state, and federal, that we are required, I want to say, to meet. It seems like I've heard dialogue that, well, the county commissioners are on their own little kingdom, their own little level, to where they can deflect however they want to, and then it gets litigated. They expect the citizens to fight them in court or whatever on something that's already written in statutes and ordinances. So steadily it ends up costing us citizens more and more money. And I know you guys are citizens too, but you're actually getting paid by the citizens also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I will give you an answer for Verbetta in my commissioner report, along with some of the other queries that I received last week. Are there any other members of the public that would like to make? Oh, yes, I'm doing, yeah, I was gonna do in person for, is there anybody else who was in person before I go to Internet land? All right, Mr. Kramer, I believe you had your hand up first.
Yes, good morning. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
I, this isn't a question necessarily, but a comment that in regards to the press release that was issued by the fair board yesterday and some of the comments earlier from the people at the commissioners' table about there is direction that we have authority, do not have authority, now we have authority. It begs the question of the competence of the legal opinions that are being delivered to this board. And history will indicate that there is a number of lawsuits that have been litigated by the previous board, which were unfounded and wasted a tremendous amount of taxpayer dollars as a result. And whether those lawsuits were litigated based on the legal opinions or whether the commissioners decided to move forward against legal opinion is unknown and has never been revealed. It will probably never be revealed. But I want this board to take a moment to really consider who they're getting their legal advice from and are those individuals competent to do so based on their past performance?
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, you're, when people come up and speak at the microphone, I am not able to hear them very well. I don't know if the microphone is turned up or on, but if you would please check. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Adam Clark, would you mind checking to see if the microphone's on? Thank you. And there is the overhead mics as well, but... Oh, it's quirky. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Patterson, we'll do our best. You still got your hand up. Is there anything else for you? All right, our next item on the agenda is to adopt the order of the agenda.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, pay, adopt the order of agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
The order of the agenda has been adopted. Is there a District One Commissioner report for today?
Yeah.
Okay.
Went to Texas, had a good trip. It rained on all the way back. Only had two hot days down there, so it was good. Good to be back, good to see all y'all. That is my report. Other than that, didn't much happen in the last two weeks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bradshaw. Commissioner Williams.
All right, so I'm going to kind of use my report to give some answers to your questions on the fair board. So the fair board isn't using the secured data in that room. That's not what's happening. They're just getting tech support from the sheriff. That's not, it's not the same thing. So a lot of people have messaged about what is going on with the fair board because of the competing releases, and I do think that it warrants us having an actual meeting with the public regarding what's happening, because there's a lot of questions, and as people come through with questions, and more questions come of it. So I will reach out to the prosecuting office after we have our meeting today to see if it's reasonable for us to actually put this as a discussion so that we provide information to the community. And if that is allowed, I'll make sure that I send out that information to the people that have asked specifically about the fair board. With respect to Mr. Kramer and legal advice, I think one of the difficult things about county government is that it's not something that, it's combining employees and elected officials, and the elected officials aren't required to follow the direction of legal, even if they request legal advice. And I think that it is something that maybe the prosecuting office can have that discussion with the community so that we can have more clear direction on what is their function that for the board as a whole. Currently, the prosecuting office has given new guidelines that they want this board to be more transparent, so all three people on emails, and that's how they'll give responses. And then when asking for opinions, they're going to give written responses back on an actual format to help with some of those concerns that you're addressing with the risk of litigation and the cost to the taxpayers. So for today's planning, that went really well. It was a good way of kind of setting the tone of, we want to be involved in what's happening in Bonner County, and we have a planning team that is open to that communication. Planning is such a high visible function, and there's a lot that happens that we don't see, but the stuff that we are seeing, people have differing opinions. So I absolutely appreciate the planning department for coming down and sitting through the chat and answering questions, as well as the people that came forward with objective questions so that we can move forward and understand how we can develop as a county that's in line with what the individual areas want. I think one of the kind of resounding ideas is, we need to be present, we need to be involved, and we need to hold people accountable to what's written, but more importantly, we need to be part of shaping what is written, not just allowing a, you know, a group of people, but that public comment section and bringing it forward. Because it is accurate that as individuals are sitting out there, you're going to have different focuses. Some people know a lot about natural resources, so we need that community person to step forward and identify. For example, one of our issues is, we don't really have a critical habitat map, and we've been told it's because our whole county would look like critical habitat. So then the question is, how do we address the habitat while we grow? And I think that requires us as a group of people to come together and have that discussion in a positive environment and the mutual respect for the areas that people come in. So I appreciate everybody that participated in commissioner chat, chat this morning, and I encourage the commissioners to come in and listen to these people speak, because it can help, I, help us to interpret the issues from the public and from our employees in a more constructive way, because it is an open dialogue that's not coming with a set of rules and guidelines with a lot of no's. So I think that that's, it's a definite benefit to our community. I have to say thank you to Road and Bridge, as always. They answered the call when Blanchard said, what is happening with all of this road repair in the height of our roads? We held a discussion with our foreman Ron as our director was out, and the community wants to, again, thank Road and Bridge for coming down, discussing what has happened with the roads, and being willing to provide some difficult answers. There's a lot that we learned from Road and Bridge in our particular area, to include how do we get the roads, how is GIS identifying the roads, and how many of us have driveways that are not permitted and shouldn't be where they are, and how we contribute to some of the issues. And I just appreciate everybody that comes down when I say we're going to have that discussion. I know that it's difficult because some of us had negative impacts to the road repairs, such as they got boxed in in their driveways, but to know that Road and Bridge comes down and answers those questions and provides solutions and is available is an amazing relationship that we're cultivating as people. So I definitely appreciate that. We are still waiting for our director top to come back so we can look at the bigger vision of our area, especially as it goes to roads. For those in our Blanchard area, absolutely Blanchard Elk Road is on the list of, can we look at our speeds? We've got buses, we've got log trucks, and we've got people that fly down that road, and there is a safety concern. It has been heard, and we are waiting for that review. As always with traffic studies, if that shows that people are traveling at a higher speed, you could end up with a higher speed. So it's necessary for us to get that discussion going with Director Top of, what can we do about the development that's occurring in Blanchard, especially as it comes to roads? And what is our obligations as residents of the unincorporated portions of our county? On October 21st, 6:00 PM, Blanchard Community Church is holding a soup night, and it's also a great opportunity for us to come together as a community. I know in West Bonner County area, it's a definite need for us to kind of reconnect with who our neighbors are, to understand what the needs are in our area so that we can bring them forward. So that's a definitely great opportunity to participate. Our next commissioner chat is going to be DEQ, and they're going to bring a panel, and we are expecting to have a lot of people that have questions. I am going to, on this one, I'm going to have note cards prior to the meeting so that you can write your questions down so that we can get through more questions. I, I absolutely love that people want to tell their story, but 45 minutes is too short to give a three-minute introduction to the question that we need to ask. So on this one, since it's going to be a panel, we're going to write questions down. If during that discussion someone has a question, we will still try to get it answered. But on DEQ, they're coming with information that they want us to have from their department. And we have questions of water quality. We have questions of how we're building around water. And so I want to be a little bit more structured and organized and put out my plea for being more specific to the agencies and allowing that information to flow, especially on this topic. On the 28th, it's the Priest River Community Forum from 10 to 12 at the senior center. So I already put out the flyers for that event. The community wanted to see not just who their elected officials are, but also what's going on in their community as we rebuild from a difficult time with respect to the community and the recall, and now we're into the period of time where we have to select new board members. I encourage everybody to participate with the, for my zone five, which is Spirit Valley, we've got two people running. We need to make sure that we're getting the information out, so we're making informed decisions. We have lower attendance at our school. We have grades that were in the lower 5%. We need to figure out how we fix what's happening in our area so that the kids get the education that they need. And that does take the community to be present and to understand and to fill some of the gaps. I had a call for what can we do with mentoring, and there is an impediment with being mentors in that particular school, and I think it's probably statewide. It's what is it required to be a mentor around students? And so we have to go back to the drawing board and think of other ways to positively impact and help that community. We still don't have a superintendent identified. A lot of people have asked, what are we doing with respect to that, and what does the outlook look like if we don't get a certified superintendent? And right now, we are in a, we have to wait and see what that looks like and where we're going to go from here as we continue to rebuild the West Bonner County School District. October 31st is the chat where it's just me, and we're going to kind of go over a recap of what we've heard. Minorland Division, we're still working on that workshop, but we need to look at where we are with development impact fees. Does it make sense for us as a board to look at that in the unincorporated areas so that we can get over the hurdle of what is it like to have cities that are already doing impact fees so that we don't double dip on impact fees? So we'll have that discussion on the 31st. On November 7th, veteran Korean War vet, Mr. Seed out of Clark Fork is going to be here. He wants to have a discussion with our community about homelessness, about veterans. He actually brings a lot of vets to Bonner County to help them sign up for benefits, and what does that look like? What does the support from our community, what is, what is available from us as an average individual with respect to vets? He does work closely with a lot of vets from Bonner County and Coeur d'Alene to understand how you get benefits. So I encourage everybody to come. It is going to be a little different of a setup, but it is going to be an actual presentation. We're putting together a presentation to hit all of the issues that impact vets, and then how our county as a whole can positively impact vets. 14th will be the commissioner, the commissioner chat, because on the next two day, or week, Tuesdays, we will not have a commissioner chat to accommodate Thanksgiving, and then we'll do the same thing in December to accommodate Christmas time. So with that, I'm still working on our workshops for MLDs. Getting the information from planning was very valuable, so I encourage everybody to participate. You can look at commissioner chats in review. I know in my area, Blanchard people really like the idea of getting the information to understand how to better formulate their questions to the county so that we're working as a team and not so much as an adversarial position, that we're releasing the information into the community. I do have a request for some of our boards, like Natural Resources, to identify how as a, we can, community-wise, participate in what's going on on boards that people have an interest in, but they don't actually sit on. Because I think that's part of some of the frustrations in our community is, we have a planning commission board, but not everybody is on it. So how does that person actively participate, and it doesn't feel just like an obligatory public comment, but actually that it's being digested and heard? And in some ways, it won't get implemented, but actually understanding how do we implement something on our planning or on our fair board or on our natural resources board? So that is what I have for commissioner chat. It is a busy time next week. I encourage everybody to attend DEQ. Any questions for District Two Commissioner? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. All right, for myself with District Three. Last week, I traveled with our forester Nick Zoller and emergency management director Bob Howard up to Nordman to check out a bonfire program. Our forests are not healthy. We have recently received a bill for insurance for the county, and because of the fire danger, our costs have gone up greatly. The bonfire program, though, is something that our citizenry can take advantage of. And while I was in Nordman, I was able to observe a tracked vehicle be able to drive through the forest and take a forested area and park it out. Two weeks ago, during the Idaho Land Leaders Summit, I spoke of traveling to a forest fire that was in Kootenay County and seeing the difference. This protects lives, it protects property, and it is paid for by the state. So I would highly encourage people that live in the unincorporated areas of the county, and if you have forest land, to consider contacting our forester Nick Zoller or Bob Howard, to consider that. There are consequences. You are going to lose the ladder fuels, and you are going to have a safer residence, and your forest will be healthy. Following that, I went and I was able to perform the quarterly jail inspection, and our jail is very safe, it's very clean, and the staff is very professional. One of the big challenges that is facing our jail is we have people that have legitimately earned the right to retire. And how do we get new people that can afford to move into Bonner County? Personnel with county government is a challenge. On Friday, along with some other elected officials, I traveled to the Idaho Association of Counties Legislative Breakfast. And there, we had two elected representatives from Bonner County, Representative Hawkins from District Two, and Senator Hart, who represent the three southwestern precincts of the county. And it was a good experience, because what it demonstrated is that the problems that we face in Bonner County are not unique to Bonner County. The sheriff from Kootenay County spoke about the challenges he was having with recruiting staff, paying bills, and an understanding of the budgetary restraints to the legislators. Because as county elected officials, we are where the rubber meets the road of the legislature. The legislature is a part-time body that creates the rules that we must follow, and then we must enact them in accordance with law. Prosecutor Marshall spoke representing the prosecutors, and he brought up some of the challenges that his office is facing. And one of them that crosses all boundaries is public record requests. We live in a day and age of political dynamics. There are people that are happy, and there are people that are not. And all of these requests of which you are entitled to by law in Idaho.
Can I interrupt you? They can't hear you.
It's, there's. There's a green light. All of these requests that are, you are entitled to according to law, they take time, and they take money. For the treasurers, there's challenges with HO292, which is where the legislature, in their wisdom, came up with an idea of how to return some taxpayer funds to them, but the coordination between the county and the legislature sometimes is like two ships passing in the night. So the legislature is going to give money back to you. The consequence for the treasurer's office here is that treasurer Coster has to wait until the state tells her how much money is going back per taxing district. Bonner County has 54 taxing districts. We have more taxing districts than Ada County. And there's a variety of reasons for that, but it speaks to the unique nature of the 44 counties. It also creates a lot of challenges for staff. So staff will be working from the point that that information is given until the taxpayer gets it. And this is an ever-changing landscape. Assessor Engelhardt brought up some other challenges, and my point in bringing this forward is that well, Bonner County might have some dynamics amongst our elected officials. The challenges that you face as citizens and that your elected officials face are shared across the state, or at least as I was observing at that meeting, they are shared in District One of North Idaho. I did attend the commissioner chat today, and I want to commend our planning staff for their professionalism, and the questions from the county residents who attended were quite good. One of the things that I referenced previously was state controller Brandon Wolf's attempts to bring transparency to your government at all levels. And we received something that is in very small print that reminds me unfortunately that I need bifocals. And it is, I can't even squint at it, but what it is, it is a controller, it's a registry for local government entities, registered entities and compliance status for registered year 2023. And what it does is it tells which of all of our taxing districts are participating with the state comptroller's rules, which if you want to see all of this, go to Transparent Idaho. You can find out how much I make, how much Assessor Engelhardt makes, how much any public official in the state of Idaho makes. It is a wonderful tool, and they are increasing that. They also discussed at our IAC Legislative Breakfast about trying to streamline some of our public records requests through this site because of the expense and the burden that the taxpayer bears. Finally, local elections are coming up. My wife and I have secured a babysitter for tonight so that we can have an exhilarating date with our potential residents or future mayor and our city council people. So for Sandpoint, it is at Community Hall tonight at 5:30, and I expect that it is going to be crowded. So if you are a Sandpoint human and you are interested in listening to your potential candidates, you'd better beat me for a chair because I'm going to casually walk down there and listen to see what these people have to say. Thank you. Our next agendized item is the consent agenda, but before we do that, I'm going to read the expenditures over 5,000 for Mr. Patterson. And there are a number of them because we are still closing out the previous fiscal year. The first one is Redmond Insurance for a one-month extension on property insurance of $21,030. The next one is a confidential item from the sheriff for $7,915. Another confidential item from the sheriff for $11,000. Another confidential item from the sheriff for $11,924. A third confidential item from the sheriff for $68,210. A fourth from the sheriff for $14,975. And a fifth confidential item from the sheriff's office for $56,500. As an aside, the reason why the sheriff is able to have some confidentiality in some of these expenditures, which is in accord with Idaho law, is so that people that are sneakier than myself don't know where we are spending the money so that the residents of the jail that I talked about previously will remain as residents until they are released. The seventh item is an enhancement of washing machines and bases for the jail, which is $28,207.
Sorry, people are messaging me saying the mic is not working.
The, the, okay, we did washing machines and bases. Our next item is Proforce T7 tasers and cartridges for the sheriff, which is $31,864.80. The ninth item is Safe Restraints Incorporated Wrap Restraints and Wrap Restraint Chair, which I talked with the jailers about, and they had nothing but good things to say because it keeps the resident safe and it keeps the Bonner County deputies safe. $8,233.12. Item 10 is the Selkirk Power Generation, the standby generator, for $51,965. Item 11, Goodyear tires for the sheriff fleet, their vehicle maintenance and repair, $20,435.70. Item 12 is for bullets, a total of $10,347. And last but not least, a cannon lease contract for the sheriff's office dispatch center for $154.75. And with that, I would entertain a motion in regards to the consent agenda.
If you just keep that and I take this, and everybody can give a comment at the podium, and then we have the right number of microphones. Does that one work?
Okay.
There's a microphone right there you guys can use. The battery died, I guess they're saying.
We don't have a motion yet, Mr. Moore. We need a motion in a second, and then. Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, based on information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
There is a motion in a second. Public comment on just the consent agenda. You approach so that the people in, in Cyberland can hear the record, Mr. Moore.
Kevin Moore for the record. So earlier, you said you were going to dialogue about.
I apologize.
And so, but being you letting me come up here for a second, through your latest dissertation there, early on, you were talking about going into the woods and about the fire danger. And you said something there about insurance rates were raised, whatever. Are we still self-insured? We're not ICRMP? And so when you said insurance rates were raised, whatever, how does that?
That's proper, that is property insurance. We have a proposal before us. However, I will answer. So I owed it, and I apologize. The website update, I'll answer all of them. The website update, which I was asked last week, there, the design was approved by this project team with not just aesthetic. The, there, and this is from Director Storms. We are in the divine design phase. EvoGov is our web host. The aesthetic design is nearing completion, and this was expected by the end of last week. There is a team that has been brought forth. That includes a couple of electeds, none of the BOCC, but there are a number of our department heads. The design was approved by the project team with not just aesthetic, but at glance information in mind. We'll be making sure that search functionality, calendar event information, and department accessibility will be much more intuitive. Departmental content review will start in the next few weeks, and I will be scheduling these reviews by department groups that make sense. The website is under construction, but nothing is visible during this time other than minor adjustments. Information will not necessarily change unless dictated by the respective department head or elected officials. Once the department, the department's phase is complete, there will be a cleanup of approved user access and training, and I expect this will be completed in a month or so. There is no hard lot, hard timeline due to department and project management scheduling, but we are making great progress. I am expecting EvoGov to provide completed mockups of the design soon. When I get them, I will send them to you. In regards to the Verbetta Bridge, the decision was made in the county's favor. So the case is closed, and the county won. Finally. And it took four, four years, four years to arrive at that decision. And your last one was.
The insurance rate or whatever, and we're still self-insured, right?
Different pieces. And in regards to this one, we are looking at insurance, and that's for property insurance, and which is, which was the first consent agenda. It was the one over 5,000, which is for $21,000. And the board will be meeting with our broker to discuss that.
To be clear on the insurance, though, that is an extension of our current policy. We're looking for a new policy. That's what we got to do one more month. It's not the full policy. So when you see the real number for insurance, don't panic. This was just a monthly payment for an extension of 30 days.
Of which it's already partway through. Is there any other public comment in regards to the consent agenda? Hearing none, there is a motion in a second. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
In that case, roll call vote?
Mr. O'Mahony?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion passes. Our next item is with the Clerk's Office.
Jessica Stephanie for the record. The Auditor's Office is presenting the FY '23. Well, I'll start with number one. FY '23 Claims Batch 27 in the amount of $986,873.66 and demands in batch 27 in the amount of 120, excuse me, $120,503.85, totaling $1,107,377.51.
Move to approve payment of the FY '23 Claims and Demands in Batch Number 27 totaling $1,107,377.51.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any public comment on this agendized item? Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. O'Mahony?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion passes.
Number two, regarding fiscal year '23 EMS Batch 27 in the amount of $19,199.97 and demands in batch 27 in the amount of $8,993.76, totaling $28,193.73.
Move to approve payment of FY '23 EMS Claims and Demands in Batch Number 27 totaling $28,193.73.
I second the motion.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any public comment on this agendized item? Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. O'Mahony?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Number three, fiscal year '24 Claims Batch Number One in the amount of $801,433.33 and demands in batch one in the amount of $676,937.91, totaling $1,478,371.24.
Move to approve payment of the FY '24 Claims and Demands in Batch Number One totaling $1,478,371.24.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any public comment on this one? Mr. Patterson?
Yes, hello. So the demands here are pretty close to equal, equalling the regular expenses. And the combination of the, the '23 and the '24 are very large. So I was wondering if you could comment at least at some about what's going on with the demands here. And I'm sure insurance, the medical expenses as usual are large, but.
Yep. So in the demand batch for '24, we have obviously the medical 201,000. And then the majority of the rest of the bulk of that is, I don't know if you remember from the last meeting, but Clarissa asked for Commissioner approval to do those like excess sales or the tax sale excess to the, we're sending all that to the state. That's what those are, the 232,000 and the 176. That's what that is. So we're transferring those funds to the state for the state to manage unclaimed funds.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And it does make some sense to me even.
Is there any public, any other public comment on this agendized item? Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. O'Mahony?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
And finally, we have fiscal year '24 EMS Batch Number One for $3,320.72 and demands in batch one for $195.98, totaling $3,516.30.
Move to approve payment of the FY '24 EMS Claims and Demands in Batch Number One totaling $3,516.30.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any public comment in regards to this agendized item? Ms. Anderson?
That's different than the minimum. Our says $3,327.
I'm, I'm not certain.
I think that you're looking at it's $3,327.2 plus $195.58 comes to the total of $3,516.
There is a motion, there is a second. Any other public comment on this agendized item? Discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote? Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Stephanie. Our next agendized item is with Parks and Recreation Director Hughes. Thank you, Jason.
Morning Commissioners, morning everybody. Pete Hughes, Bonner County Recreation. I have one item for consideration this morning, and that is regarding the Garfield Bay Campground Annual Fishing Tournament Weekend. As an expression of our support to local and visiting anglers, Bonner County Recreation would like to open the Garfield Bay Campground to free camping October 26 through the 30th. Due to limited services in the campground, there is no fee required to camp. Bonner County will gladly accept donations to help with the costs associated from the campers. This will be for one weekend only. No reservations will be required. And for the record, the county is not involved in the fishing tournament in any way. We've recognized a need for a place for people to have a safe place to stay. Campers come from, anglers, campers come from, from surrounding states. We've seen people out of Canada, so they come from a long ways. And we'd be happy to provide them with a, with a place to stay on board's approval. And the costs associated are minimal. We keep the bathrooms stocked. And I myself make appearances out there to check on things throughout the weekend. And with that, I will turn it over to the board.
How long has this been going on? This isn't something that's brand new, is it?
For quite a few years, yeah, yep.
Based on the information before us, I move that the board approve opening the Garfield Bay Campground from October 26 through the 30th to free camping for the general public.
Second, Deb.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any comment from the public on this matter? Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote? Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Lupton?
Good morning, Teddy Lupton, for the record. The first thing I have on my agenda is the Facilities Department is requesting permission to move forward with the proposed winter snow removal contract, sorry, for Lippard excavation and pipeline to maintain both Bonner County Jail complex and Bonner County Juvenile Detention Center for the winter of 2023, 2024. Attached along with the memorandum are the rates for sanding, de-icing application, shoveling, and removal of snow. This contract is similar to prior years and would come out of Budget 034108680, the contracts, snow removal. And I wanted to let you know that the difference from last year to this year, this is something we do yearly. The biggest increase was on backhoe rental. It went from $135 an hour to $150 an hour. So $15 is the highest increase on any of their equipments or services.
Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the proposed winter maintenance contract with Lippard excavation and pipeline for the snow removal at the Bonner County Jail and Juvenile Detention Center.
I second the motion.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any comment from the public on this agendized item? Mr. Patterson?
I, I understand that, you know, how much snow we get will affect all this, but could you tell us what was spent last year so we get an idea of how much money's changing hands?
Approximately $16,000.
Thank you.
Is there any conversation or discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote? Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries.
All right, second item I have for you is I'm requesting permission to move forward with the contract renewal for generator maintenance from Western States to maintain the administration building, courthouse, and multi-use facility generators for the years September 2024 to August 2027. This is a pay-as-you-go contract. Attached are the base rates with additional maintenance recommendations. The yearly base rate for the courthouse is $1,663.11. Administration building is $2,172.43. The multi-use facility is $1,925.77. The contract is similar to years prior and would come out of Budget 034107421 for the courthouse and 00110-7421 for the administration building. And what this maintenance covers is a yearly engine service and inspection, and it's a two-hour load bank test. And then if there are recommendations of any repairs that may need would be additional to that, as in battery replacement, hose replacement.
Based on the information before us, I move that the board approve the contract renewal for generator maintenance from Western States for the courthouse, administration building, and multi-use generators.
There is a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or question from the general public in regards to this agendized item?
Yeah, this is from 2024 to 2027, but these rates are yearly, yearly rates, $1,600, $2,000, $1,900.
Yes, and it won't change for the three years.
Are there any other questions from the general public in regards to this agendized item? Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mr. O'Mahony?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agendized item is with Engineer Ferguson.
Spencer Ferguson, for the record. On January 31, 2017, Bonner County Commissioners approved Resolution 1711 stating that departments may only pre-obligate the county to third parties in the amounts at or below $5,000. This stemmed from litigation that a court provisionally determined that the county employees have fiscal authority to obligate the county financially to third parties. It further states that any attempt by a county employee or independent contractor to pre-obligate the county in amounts over, over the set amount is hereby declared null and void unless expressly ratified by the BOCC in the subsequent meeting conforming to. unless expressly ratified by the B O C C in the subsequent meeting conforming to Idaho's Open Public Meeting Law. Whereas, a construction project will sometimes have a change order of over $5,000 and waiting the B O C C approval could delay the project, it is recommended to move the spending authority to $20,000 to the engine, to the engineering department for the purpose of only the EMS Station One project.
Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 23-83 stating engineering may only pre-obligate the county to third parties in the amount at or below $20,000 for the EMS Station Number One project, excuse me, Resolution 23-84.
I'll second the motion to advance it for discussion.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Omot. I, there was a similar proposal brought forth by the Solid Waste Department earlier this year regarding the Colburn Improvement Project. And myself and others spoke against that proposal and, and in the, and the county ultimately decided not to do that, that these 24-hour meetings could be held in lieu of increasing the individual department's ability to obligate the county. And a very nuanced, but important nuanced difference between this proposal and that of Colburn is Colburn was positioned that we needed to make sort of on-the-job site decisions. And this is specifically related to engineering and anyone who has been part of any type of commercial engineering or even residential engineering for that matter knows it doesn't ever move fast. And so I would be very curious as to why we need to increase the spending authority at this current point in time.
Mr. Kramer, the reason why is as stated in the proposal brought forth by Mr. Ferguson, which is a change, change orders of a, of a building with $7 million that are over 5,000 is more regular and this authority has been cleared by legal and is limited in scope only to this project. Did I miss anything, Spencer?
No, that's right. That, that's fine if legal has cleared it. That doesn't necessarily, legal can say that it's legally allowed. That doesn't mean that it's good business for the county. I understand it's an expensive project and I understand that expensive projects can have expensive overruns. I would, I would advocate for the Commissioners to not approve this, this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Is there, is there any other public comment in regards to this agendized item?
Yeah, it just makes me think of what Mr. Kramer was talking about, kind of setting precedent or whatever. So yeah, in scope, whatever, and setting precedent. It says that this is just for this project, but this is how these precedents get set.
Thank you.
Tricia Bullen for the record. Is this in regards to the meeting that was held yesterday regarding the EMS remodel?
No.
Ms. Bullen, no, and comments, this is totally separate.
Okay. What?
We need some consistency here because when, we can't have only some Commissioners can answer back to people when they say so. We had a lady who asked a question and you said the Board can't answer. So we have to be consistent because I'm trying to fit in line with that. So.
Commissioner Williams, thank you, and I agree, and we will be consistent in that, that the Chair is who manages the meeting. And according to the code as stated, I can answer that question, so I did.
And other people can do. I'm just pointing this out to you is if you're picking and choosing which people of the public can get a response, that's not the direction that we want the meeting to go. And so this lady had a question and you told her no answer, but Mr. Kramer had a question and you answered. And it is only the process that I'm talking about. We have to be consistent because as she stands there wanting an answer, then we say we will use the rule for you, but not for someone else. It'll help the meeting go more smoothly if we are consistent as a Board. And yes, you are the Chairman of this based on the decision yesterday, but I can actually ask questions also of people of the public. I'm just saying be consistent. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the answer to your question is that the, this, this memorandum that is before us had nothing to do with yesterday's meeting.
Okay. Is there a plan for this project? Or is it like yesterday's where it's just sort of, we're spending money with no plan?
No, this 100% has a plan.
This has a plan. This process took four years to come to fruition. So there is certainly a plan. Ms. Bullen?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bullen.
Amy Lunsford for the record, and I would just like to say I disagree as well. I don't think you should be giving them the authority. I think everything should come across your desk and that you should be managing what's coming in and out. So we don't end up in another legal situation where somebody says it's your fault for giving them freedom to spend money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lunsford. I have faith that regardless of what decision we made, someone will come and point fingers in one way or another, and this is a unique situation. Is there any other comments from the public in regards to this agendized item? All right. So deliberation amongst the board.
So I, I have some concerns regarding this because I also agree that the job of the Board isn't to make it easier to spend faster. There's a reason that you have stopgaps. It's so that you can take the time to have that discussion and approval. This should not occur so much that you need $20,000. And if you were able to listen to yesterday's meeting, the workshop, it was stated more than once that we actually don't have a plan in place and the decision was write a plan. So before we start asking for an increase in spending authority, we need to present the plan for this building. There was a discussion yesterday of augmenting that project and not have the DMV because there was a concern about parking. That wasn't a new idea that DMV would need parking. It's that we didn't take the time to make the plan, but we are spending money. We had people that brought forth concerns with respect to the money that we've already spent that we potentially won't recoup and we don't even know that dollar amount because we haven't done the work. I find it absolutely paramount that Bonner County Board receive every request to go over $20,000. This is not our money as Commissioners, it's your money. And when that $20,000 request comes in repeatedly, you need to be able to ask why. Because if it's happening a lot, then maybe we need to review, who are we contracting with? Who is in the engineering role? Is there a process failure that has us going this high? It is an obligation that we would be changing and this came up before on the same department. They requested the same thing. Legal saying, yes, you can raise it, doesn't mean that it's a recommendation to do it. And so in order to have transparency and to hold people accountable for presenting a plan, we need to have that first before we start spending more money. There's a potential we're going, if we move to the suggestion that was made yesterday to remove the DMV, we've already bought some fixtures for it. We already did a plan for it. We could really actually lose money and that's from poor planning and it's not good business. So the decision yesterday was that we needed a plan. That plan should include then if there is a request to change it, but the plan needs to come first. This is a, we're doing this project as a pay-as-you-go and more than once the, this was stated from this department that the problem is, is we didn't think this part through, that DMV would have maybe larger vehicles. We didn't do something part of planning, so we need to do that first before we give authority to spend money. When you consider budget hearings, I said over and over, why are we giving $300,000? What is that for? And so we were given information, but now it's, wait, we don't actually have a plan. I don't want to end up losing money on this project, which we're already slated to do. We don't know the outcome and there's no reason that we need to raise the amount with the number of 24-hour notice meetings that we have. There's, this is actually a reasonable one to have to do that on. So just do a 24-hour meeting notice that everybody can participate so that you can track and trend how we're managing this project. We're not able to do that if we say we want to make it easier for engineering. The difference with road and bridge, because road and bridge came with a similar request, but the difference from road and bridge is their initial cost is never 5,000. It's always higher and they can't move reasonably to get the work done. That's an extenuating circumstance that was actually brought forward with justifiable reason why we needed to do that for road and bridge. And they achieved the 20 not because of making it easier, but because it wasn't in line with what their department was. And that's a reasonable decision. This is more of an ease of process. We shouldn't really be doing this. And I don't agree with Commissioner Omot's statement that this is like usual and customary to need to spend that much off the cuff. That to me means we did something where we're not really planning for it because I should be able to track it. And I think there is a good idea of when we put down projects, we shouldn't just be saying it's a $7 million building, so go ahead with the 20,000. That's not planning the project. We should be actually telling you where we are with the projects as we're going along so you can track it because it is our money as a county that we're spending that you guys need to assess how we're spending the money and how we're giving the information on the project. I'm in significant disapproval of giving $20,000 an increased limit when yesterday's decision affirmed that this department does not have a plan for that building. And we have already committed departments to how they're going to move and what they're going to move and now we're changing that. We're putting the cart before the horse. We need a plan in place. The comment was made, well, how long will that take? And my response was, if the plan, if making a plan is a problem, then we should have never broke ground on a project. We need the plan in place. So my, I will not be convinced to raise it. There's nothing negative about doing a 24-hour meeting notice for this. We can do 24-hour meeting notice for that if it comes up. I don't know that this has actually come up a whole bunch, even in this calendar year of we need to increase it to 20. So my position is it's not reasonable. I would like the staff to work on the plan for this building and then it gets presented to this community, to this Board and to the other elected officials who have a desire to be in that building based on what was decided before.
Thank you, Commissioner. To begin with, we're talking about two different buildings. So we're comparing apples to oranges if I was to follow along with that type of logic. Yesterday's meeting referenced this building, which is on the west side of Division Street. The memorandum that is here today is in reference to EMS Station One, which is on the opposite side of the street. There are two buildings with two different sets of plans. One of them, the county has hired a professional architect and the county consistently utilizes the service of a professional engineer who is licensed in the state of Idaho. We have experts in regards to construction in this field. All spending authority begins and ends with the Board of Commissioners. Whether we choose to delegate some of that authority and if that is in the best interest of a project or the taxpayer is the responsibility of this Board of Commissioners. This is very specific and it is in reference to EMS Station One, which is not the building we are sitting in, but the building that is being constructed on the opposite side of the street that did take four years and multiple meetings, opportunities for the public to comment. And so I believe it would be a gross misstatement to even begin to suggest that there is not a plan as the county has taken four years, had multiple meetings of which there, in the nine months that you and I have been in office, there have been meetings with contractors. There have been meetings with the architect. So I simply see that as an apples and oranges conversation. And part of this comes down to what the engineer and the construction department has to say. I think that this is in the best interest of the county. I am in support of it and it makes complete sense to me to consider this.
I need to correct something you said. Yesterday's meeting was a workshop and it was very specific to EMS Station One. What it says from the individual that requested it was, I have a couple of concerns regarding EMS Station One at alternate bid item administration building, DMV remodels specifically. It's my opinion that the construction of DMV will create two issues of concern. So I'm not wrong that we discussed this issue yesterday. The question isn't whether or not the county at the end is responsible. It's what is good business practices? And so when you're talking about auditing a business or a government, you don't remove the, the stop signs to make it easier to get to your end destination. The stop signs allow you the opportunity to do a good job of controlling what needs to be controlled, which one of those is costs. Yesterday, it was specifically stated, and I actually requested the tape and listened to it a second time. It was stated that we don't have a plan, that some of this was the result of no plan. The decision from yesterday was to make a plan for this. And so asking to increase the dollar amount with no plan, knowing that that was the decision yesterday and the topic, which I literally just read the workshop statement, is not appropriate because there is no plan and we talked about it. And there is a reason that you don't give over all of those duties because at the end of the day, it's the Board that has to make the decision. And so if the individuals are given a higher level, the people have a reasonable response of, well, we didn't elect them, we elected you guys. And at which level do you say we have to do our job to review it? Because for me, when I look at this project and I listen to what happened in that workshop, as a Commissioner, I would have been like, oh, we need to see our county plan before we even ask someone to draft what the building would look like. We need to do our job and not send that off to someone else. And there are other areas in Bonner County where that has to happen. This is actually not one of them. And so yes, we talked about EMS Station One yesterday and the vote was to make a plan for this construction.
Call one question, Mr. Chairman. We were talking about two different buildings. Let's get back to the one question.
I agree. Do you have anything to add to this deliberation before I call for the vote?
I'm sorry, but we can't change the fact. And so the, the clarification, you guys have to concede the notice. I'm actually reading what it said. It says EMS Station One. His paper says EMS Station One. And so I'm not.
EMS Station Number One is across the street. What we talked about yesterday is downstairs in this building. Thank you. I was here at the meeting. Thank you very much.
So point of order, I'm going to draw us back. I will draw, that, we are, there is no public comment. We are in deliberation amongst the Board of County Commissioners. The opportunity for public comment on this has passed. I am drawing us back into the purpose of our agendized item, which is the business of Bonner County. Roll call vote?
Just a second here because I, so you want to use Robert.
It is 10:25 and we will take a 10-minute recess. It is 10:25 and we will take a 10 minute recess.
It would be cruel to make people eat what I eat.
It is 10:35 and we are coming out of recess and we are returning to deliberation after a point of order was made by Commissioner Bradshaw. And roll call vote.
Mr. O'Mott?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
No, I believe the commissioners should exercise their authority and make sure that we're communicating to the community about what we're spending, how we're spending it. I don't see that there was even a need shown as to why we need to increase from $5,000 to $20,000.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. And our next agendized item is Mr. Mulder with Road and Bridge.
Good morning. Matt Mulder, Staff Engineer for the Road and Bridge Department. We are requesting approval to enter into a lease and purchase agreement with Umpqua Bank for the financing of one CAT motor grader. These are the graders that we previously have signed the lease agreements with CAT for and went through a competitive bidding and selection process. Total amount to be financed is $326,799 with a 4.99% interest rate for the term of five years with annual payments of $32,201. And anyone who's savvy with their money will realize that five payments of $32,000 do not add up to $326,000, which is the total amount. That's because we're getting credit for the guaranteed buyback from CAT at the end of that five years, which is already incorporated into these payments. So before you are the Umpqua Bank greeter lace, greater lease financing documents for your approval.
Based on the information presented, I move to approve entering into the lease purchase agreement with Umpqua Bank and to sign the lease accordingly for one CAT 140 AWD motor grader for the sum of $326,799 with an annual interest rate of 4.99% for a total of five annual payments of $32,201.
Second, Pat?
There is a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this agendized item? Mr. Moore?
You have more for the record, Mr. O'Mott. So we probably have four or five graders. And so all of them are probably on a five year plan or we're paying $30,000 a year. Or no, one man, I guess. Were there a usage?
We have a lot more than five. I don't know the total number for sure. It's probably 12 or 15. And the different graders are on different timelines of leases. Some of them are on five years, some are on seven. I think we used to have some on three. I think we've gotten rid of those now. But it's, it kind of a rotating cycle of different graders and lease periods.
So you don't have to replace them all at one time?
And why do we lease instead of purchase, Mr. Mulder?
Every time that we have looked at the costs of purchasing verse and owning versus leasing and the amount of maintenance that's required on these, when we're leasing, CAT or John Deere will be doing all of the maintenance for us. And they tend to be very expensive when maintenance does come up. And the guaranteed buyback that they give to us at the end as a government entity is very generous and really tips the scales to make this make sense financially.
So, yeah, I'm a mechanic and so I don't like potholes because I know it wears my vehicle out or whatever. But if we have seven plus road graders at any given time, whatever, that's quite a amount or whatever that we're paying for a year.
It is a lot of money and graders are a critical piece of machinery that we do not want breaking down when we need it most, which is usually when we're plowing snow. So having newer graders that are not down is pretty important to us.
And if you buy them versus leasing them, you get a whole 90 day warranty versus the lease period.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you get it all back, but not have to pay that maintenance.
Is there any other public comment on this agendized item? Is there any discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. O'Mott?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mulder. Are you Melissa today?
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, your hair looks different.
All right. Mr. Ferguson presenting our next agendized item for solid waste.
Yeah, Spencer Ferguson for the record. On April 25th, 2003, the B O C C awarded SNL Underground Inc. the contract for the Culver and Improvements Project. The project total was $6,285,393. This change order is for an increase in the amount of $28,201.30. The work includes, we modified the scale tunnel to allow trucks to travel north and south. We regraded the pit road to improve turning. And we have a credit for not painting the structural steel.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that the county approve SNL Underground Inc. change order number four in the amount of $28,201.30 for the tunnel entrance exit regrading and saving for not painting the structural steel inside the building. I further authorize the chairman to sign the change order administratively.
I'll second the motion to advance it for discussion.
There is a motion and a second. Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
Is that structural steel raw? Or does it have any type of protective coating on it?
It's got coating on it.
Okay. And then my other question is in regards to the trucks being able to travel north and south. Why was that not part of the original site plan in order to allow traffic to move in both directions?
So the, um, the reason was because we, we had a direction selected as part of the overall project that we wanted to modify it to. And it became apparent that we may end up having to change that in the future just with both, operating both tipping floors at the same time. So we added that in.
Okay. And I'll just, I'll just point out that in this particular instance, this is, this change order is over the $20,000 amount that was originally requested for this project anyways. So let that be of record to you, Commissioners O'Mott and Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Moore?
You have more for the record, President O'Mott.
Nope.
Not citizen?
No, not president. That's the commissioner.
President, Commissioner?
Oh.
Was that prophetic? Are you running for something else?
Eighties, no. Eighties, no. Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
So, yeah, a couple of things of interest here, I think, or whatever. I mean, earlier, Mr. O'Mott, you were talking about apples and oranges. And so we know there's a red and an orange color to that. But as a citizen or whatever, it's about the green here. It's about the money. And so the cost overruns or whatever, we have change orders, we got cost overruns. And, and so X amount of years ago, hopefully Mr. Mulder can help me out here with the terminology. There was a culvert that we replaced-
Mr. Moore, the agendized item that we are-
About cost overruns.
No, that is not, we are not talking about cost overruns. We are talking about a change order and a tunnel going north and south. So I'd appreciate it.
Which has to do with a change order or cost overruns.
Cost overrun, there was also a rebate. So please keep the comments in reference to the agendized items, sir.
Well, because of previous things that have happened in the past or whatever, the Bonner County citizens paying exponentially more to finish a project because of change orders or cost overruns. At one time, whatever, as for this culvert that got changed over Priest River or whatever, another $400,000, there was talk amongst the commissioners about construction insurance. So where the, the people that are doing the project, they have the responsibility of not exponentially costing us citizens more money as for them initially in their bidding have cost insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. There is, is there any discussion amongst the board in regards to this? No more hands. Is there any, pardon me, I was looking to see if there are more hands online. I see no more hands. Is there any discussion amongst the board on this agendized item?
For me, on this particular one, I, a lot of people have had questions on the Culver and Improvement in terms of what we're changing. And I under, I'm not understanding why we're changing this particular issue. Is it for the convenience or is it a need? And I do think it's a valid question of when you look at the current plans, why was it not, what was the reason for not including it? And then what brought it up to add into it now? And I've received a lot of inquiries onto the project itself. So can you, can you provide some? And it's a little unfair because you're not the writer of it. So I completely get if you want to say you were just here to read the memo. And then if you don't know that answer, I can ask Bob at a different time.
What specifically you're talking about change, being able to run the trucks both ways in the scale pit?
Yeah. So the, the big cost it looks like is that you want to allow long haul trucks to enter from either direction of the tunnel. And what's the reason for wanting to change that now versus when the original design was put forth? What's causing that change?
Um, it was, it was kind of an operational thing. So when we, we had to close down the existing, well, we had to close down the tunnel road to construct the new building. And that resulted in the trucks having to back in. And the scales in the existing don't go both ways. They, they don't, you can't, they don't work if you back the truck in to the pit. And so when we had originally bid all this, we'd selected a direction. We'd selected improvements to, to keep the trucks in one direction. And as part of the construction, we kind of figured out that, hey, we, it might be important for us later down the road if we need to work on the pit road or block it for some reason to be able to have the trucks go both ways, go north and south. So we added it in. It was, it was really a small change. We added a sidewalk. We moved the scale pits easterly in the tunnel. And then we changed some openings in the tunnel wall to allow the truck doors to open. So it wasn't a, it wasn't, really, it wasn't a huge change. It was mostly just labor type, type work to reorient the rebar and that sort of thing.
And I guess when I'm, if I'm sitting on the end of just taxpayer, the question is if that was an option, do, why? The concern that you're addressing is a valid concern. Why didn't we just do it at the beginning so that we're actually, when we're approving a project, we're approving the project, not making little changes throughout? Because then the question comes into the budget. And if I remember some of the discussions on this project where we don't have all of the money to complete it the way you wanted it completed, it was one where we did, we had our dollar amount and we were going to go up to that dollar amount. And so how do we have $28,000 to spend on this particular change? Because if we're just changing as we go, that in some ways means we didn't put forth a true plan. If what, the way you just described it, it seems like it was a need at the very beginning to have it be able to go both ways. So our original calculation should have included that so that we're realistically letting go of the- So our original calculation should have included that so that we're realistically letting go of the, maybe the wants of the project and sticking to the foundational needs of the project. And then my, and then I did have a question of where does the $28,000 come from? Because this project didn't receive the funding to go all the distance of this project. So where do you get the 28 from? Is that being requested to come out of a different fund or how's that work?
No, it's still part of the original amount. We have a contingency.
The $300,000 contingency budget?
That was for the EMS project. This is the solid waste project. So we have a different contingency.
I thought they had that contingency as well. They don't have 300. I thought this project did as well.
I, I, I don't recall the exact amount. It was, I think it was closer to 7% or 10% of the project budget, in this one case. So it would be like $700,000.
At the initial phase, not, that's not a number that is current because the county has already engaged significantly in the execution of this project test plan.
Yeah, yeah, and we've had a few change orders. And then as far as the tunnel orientation and the scales and everything, it wasn't really identified as a, as an issue until we, we started getting going. Like in other words, it wasn't on solid waste radar that, hey, that, you know, that, that the tunnel scales need to go to work in both directions. And so.
In the event that you have to walk off one side of it, you can still operate.
Yeah, yeah, and the, yeah, and so the scales, now the scales will continue to function.
I don't, I, I understand that and I understand the need and you did a really good explanation. What my concern is, is how we manipulate the budget in Bonner County to not put in our needs in the need section, but we give large contingencies so that it doesn't look like we're developing good plans. Because when we use contingency, which you absolutely need to have that, but when we're using it for something that could have been part of the original plan, we're pulling money from another person's department essentially that didn't get that money because we put on a project. And that's what, that's, that's a concerning way of doing projects is knowing that you can reasonably ask for a high contingency and then not actually have put that in the original bid.
In this particular case, the project's covered by a loan. So we're not, we're not pulling it directly out of the general fund. So.
But the contingency for the $28,000, you'd have to.
It's still in the loan. It's covered in the loan. So it's all, it's all been funded by the USDA RD money.
This project is also a, it is my understanding that solid waste is a fee-based fund. The voters of Bonner County had the opportunity to weigh in, pun intended, since we're talking about scales, on this particular project. And they gave their assent to this. It is also my limited understanding that it's cheaper to do something at the beginning of a project rather than waiting until one end of the tunnel is blocked off and realizing holy garbage. We should have made the scales or provided the opportunity to go both ways. So I guess for me, is this project, the entirety of, is it currently within budget?
Yeah.
So the project is within budget. So and, and this is a fee-based department of the county. This is paid for by residents who create trash. And I also know, having spoken with Ms. Gault, that in 2022, the amount of garbage that was increased was 8%. So we are not creating less garbage as a county. We are creating more. And that's actually a challenge that we face is because of our low rates, we have a lot of people who volunteer to bring us their garbage from, from out of state. So this is something that seems appropriate. Is there any other deliberation?
Yes, because, so to be clear, this project bid for greater than the $6,285,000. And what the county did was they said, this is all the money we have. This is the loan. And so when we talk about making a change order, the, my first question was, where does the 28? And then I mentioned, is that what you get on the contingency? When you bring in what the voters voted for, it, this is part of, I think, some of the frustration community-wise is they want to vote on what we're doing, not, but then they don't get a say when we're doing all of these changes throughout the project that seem like something that could have been put in the original plan moving forward. And I understand why it needs to happen, why we need to have both directions. But it gives you an opportunity to say, maybe we need to look at how we're developing these plans so that we're not having to do a change order for something that's reasonable, that we take that assessment and actually put it as part of the project. Because we know that we didn't get the full funding for this project, but the money has to come from somewhere. And as we take money from our contingencies, you're taking it from the county. And every department, this last budget cycle, we saw people coming for enhancements of the things that they needed. And we didn't give everybody what they needed because we have projects where we have to make sure we have the money to pay the cost overruns. On this one, the question really comes down to, why can't we anticipate something like that on a project that we get involved in? So we don't have to have the number of changes that cost money, especially on a project where we didn't fully, we didn't, we weren't able to fully fund this project. We said, we're going to go all the way up until the dollar amount that we have available. That, that's my concern. But I am ready to make a vote on this particular issue, but I think it's something the board should look at why this happens.
Well, large constructions always have a contingency fund. Contingency funds are for things that are unseen. And so you can't identify unforeseen things because they're not seen until you come across them. That's why you have a contingency fund. And because there is a contingency fund for unforeseen things, this is an unforeseen thing. If somebody looked at and goes, hey, if for some reason we have to block this off, we can't take garbage in or out. So if we make it work from both directions, problem solved. That's what contingency fund is, to address the thing that was unforeseen, that you didn't plan on because you couldn't see it because it was unforeseen. Does that help?
Well, is it unforeseen or we didn't actually plan? So like, we can look at our DMV.
We did plan because we had a contingency.
We have a very good example in Bonner County. We are going to put in DMV. We know that they need parking. The need for parking is not unforeseen.
Okay, we're back to garbage.
And so what I am, what I am asking is that as we move forward on projects, that we actually sit down and make plans. Because that is the problem we seem to have is we, this is a need and this is something that we can anticipate based on the project itself. So what is the process by which we as a county are putting forward plans before we start spending county money to have to make changes? That is the question I'm asking because there's an opportunity to plan for things. And actually, there is in construction, there is an opportunity to say, this is a probable, possible. So we may have to make this type of change and we can budget for those things. Like for example, we might say, we've seen the cost of steel go up and this is a five-year project. So we are going to allocate 5% knowing that there's going to be that type of fluctuation of something that's unforeseen. When you look at some of the projects, we have more ability to anticipate. But this one, and when I hear the explanation, this is a reasonable thing to do. And it's something that we could have budgeted for, planned for during the phase of planning. But that's what my point is.
But we did. It's called contingency fund.
All right, thank you. That's good deliberation. Roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes. All right, it is 10:56. There will be a five-minute recess. And then we will move into executive session in accordance with law. Thank you for your participation today.